Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the City Commission meeting for this, the twenty-third day of September 2024 at 6:00 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Dolison.
Here.
Commissioner Mercer.
Here.
Commissioner Dantzler.
Here.
Mayor Protim Yates.
Here.
And Mayor Birdsong.
Here. We'll have an invocation by the Reverend Sarah Bishop and a First Presbyterian Church of Winter Haven, and we'll be led in a pledge of allegiance by Latonya Harris, Deputy City Clerk. Please stand if able.
Good evening. Will you please pray with me? Dear wise and loving Creator God, we first would like to say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for our measure of health, we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of being appropriate, bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us, for your boundless and gracious nature. In this time of prayer, as our city commissioners meet, we offer prayers for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled commission. I ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for this agenda set before them tonight. Please give them an assurance of what will please you and what would benefit those who live and work and in and around our beloved city of Winter Haven. In your most blessed name of Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor and Commissioners, we have two presentations this evening. Our first presentation, item 5A, is for National Hispanic Heritage Month. This will be received by our employee, members of our Employee Diversity and Inclusivity Team, along with Ana Rivera, the President and Founder of the Puerto Rican Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Polk County. And I don't know that I have seen her come in as of yet, so. Okay, so Liderius, I believe, is here, and Charles Bolton, and members of our EDI team, Alan, Scott, if you would come to the podium, please. And anybody else I may have missed, I apologize. Hope. So our proclamation reads, whereas on September seventeenth, nineteen sixty-seven, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed into law the National Hispanic Heritage Week Bill, which authorized the president to designate the week of September fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was first observed in nineteen sixty-eight. In nineteen ninety-eight, President Ronald W. Reagan signed into law the creation of the National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas from America's earliest days, Hispanic Americans have played a prominent and important role in our national heritage. National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and recognize and honor the significant achievements of U.S. Hispanic communities, which have influenced American culture and enriched the fabric of our society. Hispanic and Latin American people can trace their roots to Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean, which consists of Puerto Rico, Cuba, the Dominican Republic, and smaller Spanish-speaking islands. And whereas Hispanic Americans are the largest minority group in the United States today, generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous and embodied the best of American values, including commitment to faith, family, and country. They serve with honor in all branches of the armed forces, continuing a strong legacy, and lift up their communities and the economy as entrepreneurs, executives, and small business owners, and make contributions in areas of science, art, music, politics, academia, government, and sports. And whereas the Hispanic American community has left an indelible mark on our government, culture, and economy, they continue to embody the pioneering spirit of America today. Now therefore Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Winter Haven, and in its continued effort to do for diversity and inclusivity urges all citizens to honor and celebrate the contributions and achievements of Hispanic Americans in our nation's history and in our community. In witness whereof, he is here unto set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-third day of September 2024. Signed, Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., attest Vanessa Castillo.
Good evening. I know many of our members of our Employee Diversity Team couldn't make it tonight, but for those that are here, we thank the City Commission and the City of Winter Haven for this outstanding proclamation, and we look forward to seeing everybody at our Hispanic Heritage Luncheon on October eleventh. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, our second proclamation this evening, or presentation, is in recognition of Chief David Brannon, our Winter Haven Police Department Chief of Police. As you may recall, we did a celebration for David a week or two ago, where we were able to celebrate his upcoming retirement with the men and women of the Winter Haven Police Department, and all of, many of the peer agencies that we work with, wanted to use this opportunity this evening to issue an official proclamation from the City Commission, recognizing David for his long intenured service with the City of Winter Haven. Given that Charlie Bird has worked with David longer than anybody, I'm going to give him the honor of presenting this proclamation in Word format for you this evening, and then let David make some comments.
Thank you, City Manager. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this is a proclamation for David Allen Brannon, for Winter Haven Police Chief, retired. Whereas David Allen Brannon was born in Winter Haven, Florida, on August eighth, nineteen sixty-seven, where he grew up and attended school. He graduated from Winter Haven High School, and whereas David was hired as a Community Service Officer, or a CSO, in nineteen ninety-two for the Winter Haven Police Department, eventually becoming a sworn police officer in nineteen ninety-three. And whereas David was promoted to Sergeant in two thousand, Lieutenant in two thousand four, followed by his promotion to Captain in two thousand seven, Deputy Chief in two thousand fifteen, and Chief in two thousand twenty-one. And whereas in two thousand fourteen, David received his Master's in Criminal Justice degree from Saint Leo University, and whereas David served on the Winter Haven PD Emergency Response Team from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand eighteen, eventually becoming the team's Operation Commander. And whereas David has received, received the Medal of Valor for his bravery in nineteen ninety-four, and again in two thousand twenty-four. And whereas after dedicating his life and service to the Winter Haven Police Department and the citizens of Winter Haven for thirty-two years, David will retire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore, I Nathaniel J. Birdsong Jr., Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, and on behalf of all fellow Commissioners, the City of Winter Haven, its employees and residents, do hereby honor David Brannon, and extend our deepest appreciation for his honorable and outstanding service to the Winter Haven community. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-third day of September 2024, by Mayor Protim William Bryant Yates, attested by Latonya Harris. Congratulations, David.
Well, Mayor, I'll keep this short for you. He knows the joke the other day. Mayor and Commissioners, I really appreciate, and I'm honored by this proclamation, honored to work the city this long. Got my second Medal of Valor for all this time I had to spend with Charlie here, so. You know, I couldn't let him get one dig in.
I don't know what it would be, but.
I don't think I could be a saint, but okay. But I truly appreciate it. You know, it's been a great place to work. It's been, you know, I will have to say, as a chief, it's a whole lot easier when you have a commission, and it's City Manager and staff that supports you. And, you know, we're able to discuss things, talk things out, and come out with outcome for our citizens. That truly makes it a whole, whole lot easier as a chief of police, I can tell you that. We have a lot of great men and women at the police department, and they've done a great job of making me look good. So, and I know I've challenged them, and I'll challenge them up to the day I leave this week of, you know, make the place better. You know, don't, you know, you don't always hear people say that when they're leaving, but you want them to keep making it better, and that's all I want. I truly appreciate it, and thank you.
All right. We have no developments of note. So. Outstanding issue to be discussed at this hearing are: Name of the taxing authority, City of Winter Haven. Rollback rate is six point two nine one two mils. The percentage increase in the millage rate over the rollback rate is four point seven five percent. Millage rate to be levied is six point five nine zero zero. The reasons for the ad valorem tax revenues are increasing. The ad valorem proceeds resulting from the difference between the proposed millage rate and the rollback rate will be used to offset increased operating costs and fund capital projects. All right. So we have the ordinance second reading. Would you read in its entirety, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O dash twenty-four dash forty-three, an ordinance of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, adopting a millage rate to provide sufficient funds for projected expenditures of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Whereas on September ten, two thousand twenty-four, the City of Winter Haven held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two hundred point zero six five. And whereas a budget has been prepared estimating expenditure and revenues of the city for the ensuing year, with detailed information, including revenues to be derived from sources other than ad valorem levy, and recommendations have been made as to the amount to be appropriated for the ensuing year. And whereas the City of Winter Haven strives to provide a level of service consistent with the expressed desires and demands of its citizens, and whereas it is necessary that taxpayers of Winter Haven also be willing to share the common expenditures of said services and to provide funds therefore. Now therefore being enacted by the people of the City of Winter Haven, Florida as follows. Number one, the millage levy for the four fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five is hereby set at a rate of six point five nine zero zero mils. Number two, the millage rate of six point five nine zero zero is four point seven five percent higher than the rollback rate of six point two nine one two. Three, if any word, sentence, clause, phrase, or provision of this ordinance for any reason is held to be unconstitutional void or invalid, the validity of the remainder of this ordinance shall not be affected thereby. Number four, the ordinance will take effect on October one, two thousand and twenty-four, introduced on first reading, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, passed and considered for second reading this twenty-third day of September two thousand and twenty-four, City of Winter Haven, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. Florida statutes require each taxing authority to annually set a millage rate for property taxation following required public hearings. As part of the annual budget process, each September, the City Commission establishes the ad valorem millage rate for the ensuing fiscal year. As I reported to you in July, at our budget workshop, and then also during our prior workshops leading up to your two commission meetings in September, the millage rate being enacted via this ordinance is set at six point five nine zero zero mils. The rollback rate is at six point two nine one two mils. Of the eighteen taxing jurisdictions within Polk County, to include the cities and the Board of County Commissioners, the City of Winter Haven's tax millage is ninth out of those eighteen. That is based upon all of the actions that are taking place by our neighboring sister cities during this month as well. We'll point out that the City Commission raised the millage rate in two thousand eighteen in an effort to fund capital projects by one mil. That number was later reduced in two thousand twenty-two by two tenths of a mil, and has remained at six point five nine mils since that point. Staff is recommending that the City Commission approve ordinance O twenty-four dash forty-three on second and final reading.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Approval of ordinance O twenty-four forty-three, adopting the millage rate for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five.
Thank you. I will now close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this item may do so at this time by coming forth, stating your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, by the same sign, hear none. The millage rate is adopted. Ordinance O twenty-four forty-four. Would you read by title on the City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if you'll permit me, I'll read the entire ordinance.
Oh, you'll read it by entire, it's entirety. All right.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance O dash twenty-four dash forty-four, an ordinance making appropriations of funds for defraying the expenses of the municipal government of the City of Winter Haven for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, adopting the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-four, as the official budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Whereas Florida statutes require each taxing authority to annually adopt tentative and final budgets. And whereas the City of Winter Haven has had workshops and commission meetings regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget. And whereas estimates have been made by the City Manager of the City of Winter Haven as presented in the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-four, showing the sum of two hundred and sixty-three million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars will be required for defraying the expenses of maintaining the government of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-four, anticipates sufficient revenues to fund projected expenditures of two hundred and sixty-three million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Now therefore being enacted by the people of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, as follows. Number one, the sum of two hundred and sixty-three million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars is hereby appropriated out of all of the various revenues accruing to the City of Winter Haven and set aside for the purpose of paying the expenses of and maintaining the government of the City of Winter Haven for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-five. Number two, the budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-four, on file in the office of the City Clerk, is hereby adopted by reference as the official budget of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, for the four fiscal year two thousand twenty-four dash two thousand twenty-five. Number three, if any word, sentence, clause, phrase, or provision of this ordinance for any reason is held to be unconstitutional void or invalid, the invalidity of the remainder of this ordinance shall not be affected thereby. Number four, it is the intention of the City Commission that sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered, and the word ordinance may be changed to chapter, section, article, or such other appropriate word or phrase in order to accomplish such intentions, and that sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered in the correction of typographical and or scrivenous errors, which do not affect the intent may be authorized by the City Manager or his designee without need of public hearing by filing a corrected or recodified copy of same with the City Clerk. Number five, this ordinance shall take effect on October first, two thousand twenty-four, introduced on first reading, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, considered on second reading this twenty-third day of September two thousand and twenty-four, City of Winter Haven, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, Florida statutes require each taxing authority to annually adopt tentative and final budgets. The tentative budget had been prepared based upon city needs and commission directives authorized at the Budget Workshop held Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Those directives included the adoption of the current millage rate of six point five nine zero zero mils. The budget has been prepared in compliance with the city's policies and requirements and appropriate state statutes. As the City Attorney had noted, the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five is two hundred and sixty-three million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. That is based upon the six point five nine zero zero mils. Ad valorem revenues expected to be generated from that millage rate total twenty-seven point seven nine million. So just a little over ten percent of our total revenues come from the ad valorem revenues. The budget includes a set aside from the general fund for, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for affordable housing efforts, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for support of nonprofits, that includes forty agencies to be funded in fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for community partnerships with the Winter Haven EDC, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Winter Haven, and Polk Vision, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the commission's efforts to address homeless, homelessness and housing insufficiency among families that have school-aged children. That is through arrangements that we have with Hartford, Winter Haven. It also includes two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars set aside for the Lakeland Area Mass Transit to continue the Winter Haven area mass transit program. Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget includes funding for six hundred and thirty full-time employees and one hundred and six part-time employees, continues to fund the step plan that adjusts employee rates within their pay classification on an annual basis on their anniversary, also includes, includes a cost of living adjustment that raises the entry level rate of pay for positions to no less than sixteen dollars per hour. About forty-five percent of that budget goes towards capital improvements. Those are investments into the infrastructure, whether that's new facilities, roadways, utility infrastructure. About twenty percent of the budget is aligned with personnel and related costs there that go along with having personnel, and about nineteen percent goes towards operations within our facilities. The balance of the expenses are tied to debt service, internal service support, support of other funds, and the grant and aid program. There is, it does include a utility transfer of five point three million dollars, which is consistent with the City Commission's policy of not exceeding a twelve percent threshold of the most recent audited year of operational revenues within the utility fund. And this is, again, the fourth year that the commission has met that, has reduced their, their revenues coming from the utility fund to be within that twelve percent. So that is a compliment to the City Commission. The, within the general fund, I will say that our largest expense, and I think the commission and the community should be proud of this, is our largest expense does goes towards public safety. That is not just police and law enforcement, that is also our fire operations, as well as our code compliance. The, beyond that, CRA revenues, that's also part of your budget, and you know you serve as the CRA board, along with your two citizen appointed, or citizen represented seats. Downtown CRA revenues are projected to come in at three point seven five million dollars for next year, and Florence Villa revenues are expected to come in at one point three million dollars for next year. Both of those are increases over prior year revenues. So with that, I'm happy to elaborate on any of the items within the budget. I know we've talked ad nauseam about the budget for several months now, but certainly want to make sure you have comfort with what we brought before you. Staff is recommending City Commission approve ordinance O twenty-four dash four-four on second and final reading this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance on second reading for O twenty-four forty-four, adopting the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four twenty-five.
Thank you. I will close the City Commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this item may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, by the same sign, hear none. O twenty-four forty-four, adopting our budget for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, is approved. I have no comments from the audience. However, if there's someone that would like to address this board, you may do so at this time. Okay. Would you state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Allen Anderson. I live at one four zero Broad Street. The purpose of me being at this meeting today is to talk about the irrigation, the water, the reused water that's coming into the neighborhoods. And in our neighborhood, I was, the last time I was here was April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and at that time, we were concerned about our irrigation system now was clogging up our, our system. And so we presented it at the meeting, and many of us had to go out and augment our systems with our own filter systems and clean our filters. And along with that, each time we did that, to get a system put in, to augment it, was about two fifty. If we had Massey or somebody come out, it was about two hundred dollars. I live in a neighborhood that has around sixty-one homes, and not everyone in there can afford that. Fortunately, many of us can, but, you know, we have a lot of folks that cannot. Fortunately, many of us can, but you know, we have a lot of folks that cannot. I've talked to Gary Hubbard the last time I was here, and he and his folks have been very helpful. One of his team members, Don Maroney, came out and he brought a team, and it's my understanding now that you have to put a flush system in there. It's also my understanding that at the end, we're at the end of the line, so whenever there's something going on, our system just becomes clogged up. I'm here to bring that to the attention of the city and let them know that, you know, we're dealing with things like this. This is one of our systems. It's normally white, but it's filled with things such as toilet paper, hair, plastic, and if we continue to have this problem, I know it's going to be not cost-effective for the people in our neighborhood. So I wanted to present that to everybody, and, and I'm not looking for an answer today. I'll continue to work with Gary. He and his team have been very helpful, but I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the city. Thank you very much.
Allen, can you tell me the name of the subdivision?
We're in Hampton Cove. We're off Country Club.
Thank you, sir.
And from what I understand is because we are at the end of the line, that is the issue, and like I said, your team, your folks have been helpful. They've been over backwards and, and they're trying to help us, but I think we, it's going to be a problem that's going to be problematic for the rest of the people in the community. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Ordinance second reading, O-2433, would you read by title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2433, an ordinance amending the Winter Haven Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral 2, Section 21-83, model homes and temporary sales offices, Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral 6, Division 1 concurrency, and Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral 7, Division 5 subdivision regulations for the purpose of addressing model home construction prior to final plat approval, establishing a preliminary plat process and cleanup of existing language, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for codification, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and commissioners, this action before you for second reading and final approval is related to the passage of Senate Bill 812, which becomes effective October 1, 2024, and requires the city to create a process to allow model homes to be constructed on up to 50% of the lots in a subdivision prior to the approval of final plat. It also requires the city to reintroduce the preliminary plat to the subdivision approval process. Your fact sheet explains that we did have that back in the late 90s, and they were there, eliminated about that point. I think we've had lengthy discussion on this. Eric Labby is happy to elaborate on any questions that you may have. This does take effect October 1, and this will put into play the necessary changes to our Code of Ordinances to ensure the city is in compliance with that.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Under protest, I make motion to approve ordinance 24-33 on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting.
I do want to say something. I'm going to vote for this because I know it's a state mandate, but this aggravates me. I don't like it. There's nothing about this that like this, and I want to get this on the record that this commissioner doesn't like this. This is not, this is something that Tallahassee has forced us to do, and I feel like we're setting ourselves up for problem. But I know we got to pass it because we have to do this, so that's all.
Commissioner Dancel, I think you speak for all of us. Any more discussion?
I would just say, don't kill the messenger.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. O-2433 is adopted. O-2435, would you read by title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2435, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Winter Haven forwarded by amending Plan Unit Development Ordinance O-0927, assigning Plan Unit Development PUDs only to five parcels, providing for administrative correction of scrivener's errors, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. General location, 16 parcels generally located west of US Highway 17, south of Avenue R Southwest, and east of the CSX railroad tracks. The area covered by this request is 20.02 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and commissioners, this is a request from V3 Square, V3 Haven Square Retail LLC to amend the PUD ordinance O-927 and to assign PUD zoning to five adjoining parcels. This is, the city attorney had noted, is located generally along US 17. The 16 parcels total 20.02 plus or minus acres. The original PUD was adopted by the city commission in 2009. Generally allows for retail restaurant and office uses without exterior activities on 11 of the 16 parcels. It also allows for the development of up to 277 residential units. The petition is proposing to redevelop the property with one primary anchor site intended for a big box retailer, retailer, and two smaller parcel sites. Four access points are proposed, including three along US Highway 17. The requested access from Highway 17 certainly will be subject to review and approval by the Florida Department of Transportation. The primary anchor site is expected to contain 148,000 square feet of commercial space. Staff's review of the petitioner's requested changes found several will be beneficial in redeveloping the subject property, however, some of the requested changes did conflict with portions of the city's code, will result in significant impacts to supporting infrastructure, or convey significant deviation from development standards not found elsewhere in the city. Staff has addressed this in the proposed conditions. At this point, I think following everything that we've discussed on this, unless you have questions specifically for Mr. Labby, our conclusions are that the proposed uses and development intensities are consistent with the adopted primary mixed-use hub future land use. The petitioner's request will result in a reduction of potential impacts to supporting utility and roadway infrastructure. The requested signage changes have some merit given the subject's area location on a six-lane US highway, and the subject area has been subject to PUD ordinance O-927 for 15 years with limited inquiries regarding redevelopment. Staff's recommending city commission approve ordinance 24-35 on second and final approval.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2435 on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. Ordinance O-2435 is adopted. Ordinance O-2438, would you read by title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2438, an ordinance amending ordinance 11-03, the 2035 Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan, by revising the future land use map series by amending the future land use on 14 parcels, from neighborhood support future land use to primary mixed-use hub future land use, amending 49 parcels from traditional neighborhood area future land use to primary mixed hub, mixed-use hub future land use, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. General location, 63 parcels located north and south of Martin Luther King Boulevard and lying between 3rd Street Northeast and 8th Street Northeast. The area covered by this request is 14.94 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and commissioners, I'm going to ask Eric Labby to just recap what was presented during our workshop concerning this item.
All right.
Yes, sir. Mayor and commissioners, this is again a second reading. It is to amend the future land use on 63 parcels. Historically, prior to 2011, this area was designated as commercial retail or commercial office on the future land use map, and was later changed to traditional neighborhood area as part of the 2025 future land use map. What that effectively did was eliminate the ability to do commercial uses within that future land use district, and didn't allow the property owners to fully utilize the MX zoning district that sits on these parcels today. In conversations with some of the property owners along this corridor, there is a desire to further encourage the development of mixed uses, as that is how it was traditionally developed in years past. Therefore, this land use change will allow that mix of uses to occur in accordance with the MX zoning district that is on the property today. It does not render or take away any rights that are currently allowed by the property owners within this corridor today. The planning commission did hear it on August 6, and unanimously recommended approval of this request, and staff recommends approval of ordinance O-2438.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
A motion to approve ordinance O-2438 on second reading and final hearing, public hearing.
Thank you. All right. We will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to O-2438 may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. O-2438 is adopted. O-2439, would you read by title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2439, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, by amending the official zoning map for consistency with the adopted 2035 future land use map, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and commissioners, Mr. Labby will again.
Mr. Labby's going to take it. All right.
Yes, sir. Mayor and commissioners, again, this is second read. This is a amendment to the official zoning map to, for consistency with the 2035 comprehensive plan. Essentially, this is an amendment for the purpose of smoothing out zoning boundaries to more accurately follow streets, alleys, and mid-blocks. It reflects historical uses of property that were not reflected on the, on the current zoning map, and it is to rezone old, obsolete, or PUDs that have already met all of the requirements within that PUD that are consistent with a city zoning designation today. In no case did staff recommend a rezoning or a change in the zoning that down, downzones or eliminates permitted uses within the current zoning. This was heard by the planning commission on August 6, 2024, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval, and staff does recommend approval of ordinance O-2439.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2439 on second reading.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. O-2439 is adopted. O-2440, would you read by title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission, ordinance number O-2440, an ordinance amending the Winter Haven Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1, Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral 3, Division 7, compatibility landscaping and buffering standards for the purpose of adding standards to promote and protect the city's urban forest, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for codification, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and commissioners, in November of '23, the city commission adopted the Urban Forestry Master Plan, which performed an in-depth analysis of the city's trees. 9,440 trees comprising 135 unique species were analyzed. The master plan sets forth direction on tree maintenance and planning guidelines, makes recommendations for the types of trees to be planted, and addresses mitigation and penalties to be removed for removed trees which are not diseased or dead. To aid staff in developing code language to support the master plan, Kim Lee Horn Associates was hired to do so in also looking at our related landscaping code, and they have proposed changes to Chapter 21, which we have discussed with the commission in first reading and also in the workshop. The planning commission heard this at its September 3, 2024, regular meeting, and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request. There were no public comments. Staff recommends city commission approve ordinance 24-40 on second and final reading. Again, this does not pertain to single-family residential parcels, which state statute prohibits us from doing that. This is on commercial undeveloped properties is where the bulk of these changes will apply.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance O-2440 on second reading and final public hearing.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. O-2440 is adopted. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to any item on the consent agenda may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. The consent agenda is adopted in its entirety. Resolution R-2443, would you read by title on the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution R-2443, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, adopting a revised slash modified industrial wastewater limitations table regarding local limits of industrial wastewater discharges into the city's wastewater system to incorporate industrial wastewater limit, changes approved by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, providing for codification, severability, repeal of conflicting resolutions, the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and commissioners, wastewater treatment plant number 3 uses an advanced waste treatment process, which is regulated by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Part of the permit issued for this facility establishes industrial pre-treat program requirements, and those limits must be evaluated during each five-year permit renewal cycle. In 2022, the city submitted its local industrial limit reevaluation study to DEP for approval. The analysis demonstrated the local limits for industrial wastewater discharge into the city's wastewater utility system should be increased for six of the parameters, decreased for five of the parameters, and remain the same for 10 of the parameters. The proposed revised modified industrial limit changes have received final approval by FDEP and must be adopted by the city. The required changes will not affect the city's budget. It is, it is expected that the existing industrial customers will not incur any added expense as a result of the local limit changes. Staff recommends city commission approve R-2443, adopting the revised and modified industrial wastewater limitations table, incorporating the recommended changes regarding local limits of industrial wastewater discharges into the city's wastewater utility system, and authorizing the city manager and or his designee to take all further actions necessary and related to the implementation of said revised modified local limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve resolution R-2443.
Thank you. I will close the commission meeting, open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak to R-2443 may do so at this time. Seeing none, close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposeds, by the same sign, here none. Resolution R-2443 is adopted. We have no, excuse me, ordinances, first reading. We have no new business. Commissioner Lezon reports. Commissioner Mercer?
Attended the Winter Haven Risk Management Committee for the quarter. We meet quarterly. Also attended honoring our heroes and the Freedom Walk, and the sheriff was our speaker again this year, as he was last year, the last couple of years, I think. Attended the RLC dinner in Zoffo Springs, Wachula area. It's the Ranch 17 event venue, and it was a different place to be, so, but it fit in with that area. A very western-type area. Attended the retirement celebration, Police Chief Brannon, and I think we're losing some very good people with all these retirements we've seen lately, so. And I want to say, happy retirement. You deserve it. Sometimes you're not prepared. Sometimes you're not prepared for it. I know you have told me that you are, because I was not, so. But Legoland, I slipped in and out because I had some other conflicts with that. And the Ritz Open House, I had a conflict and could not attend that. Pope County Seventh Annual Seven Rivers Water Festival, I attended that. I really enjoyed the cardboard boat race, so. And we had our own MC from the Lakes Environmental Division. Florence Philip Place, the grand opening. It was a residence welcome event, and some of the people came up afterwards and were very thankful and appreciative of having, it's a beautiful place. And one lady was in an abusive relationship, and she and her children now have a place to live. She was recommended by another agency and obtained a place there, which made it really wonderful for her. FWEDC Annual Meeting in conjunction with Main Street, that's economic development, and so, attended that, and we got their annual report, so. I also listened in on the PRWC Board of Directors meeting on teams. Sometimes I listen to it, but not all the time. The Neighborhood Service Center in Wellness and Empowerment Expo, I attended that. Was a little bit later, because, again, I had something else in the morning. And I did attend the CHNEP, which is Charlotte Hager, I don't know, it's the environmental...
Coastal Heartlands.
Yeah.
It's changed the names. It's the same acronym, but they changed the words.
Oh, okay. And there was a policy committee meeting. They were updating their policies. It went from nine to three scheduled. If you gave up lunch, you got out at 1:30, quarter till two, so it was a long day. It's a two-hour drive. And I feel sorry for you if you've been the one who attended it all the time, so. Greetings. Also, I gave the greetings from the city to the First Missionary Baptist Church for the 500 women and whites, so.
All right. Good job. All right. Busy. Commissioner Dassler.
Okay. I didn't do anything like that, but that was quite important. By goodness. Attended David Brandon's retreat. David, well-earned. I've often wondered if you ever want to, like, pull out your gun at one of these meetings and shoot somebody or shoot one of us, but this was your last time. So, enjoy your retirement. Chamber Annual Meeting, what can we say? Mr. T. Michael, man of the hour. Congratulations.
Sir.
Well deserved. I happen to know you were gonna win, so I was able to keep my mouth shut, but I scared...
You did, because you were in my office about three hours earlier.
I know, and I scared AJ a few times with some of my comments, but I knew that you were gonna win it, so. And hats off to Betsy. Betsy has been on, our new executive director of the chamber. She's been on the job about a month, and I happen to know this event is always nerve-wracking for the executive director, so. She pulled it off. It went great. Sold out, 450 people. T. Michael won. Kumbaya. Everybody's happy, so. Had an A-hack meeting, and I'm, and we have a full slate. A-hack meeting, A-hack committees involved and engaged. Very happy with the way that that's going now. We were able to get, we saw a lot of the reports already, but they were able to present them to the committee, and everybody's excited about what's going on there. Also went to the Ritz Open House, and I gotta tell you, if Dan Chesnik in Theater Winter Haven can't make that place work, nothing can. So, this is our last hope, but he has got such good energy and such good plans, and they put on such a good show about all they're gonna do. Their, their intention is to be open at least five nights a week, sometimes six, with different events, so I think it's going to create a lot of opportunity and a lot of buzz downtown, which is a great thing. And I, 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 I'm still very, very cautiously optimistic that we've done the right thing by buying that place and turning it over to Dan. But if he can't do it, and the energy that he's bringing, they gave us a little sample of what it was gonna be like. They flooded the room with fog, and then they put these lasers through out there. It was the coolest-looking thing, so it's gonna be things like that.
Commissioner Dassler, I believe their first event is tomorrow evening.
What night?
I think they have one of their tribute Tuesday's kicks off tomorrow night, which is, like, I think it's the Eagles tribute, if I'm not mistaken, but it's on their website.
Well, we need to support Dan and give him kudos whenever we can, because he's working his, he's working his piney off to make that place work, so let's encourage Dan that we're, you know, and support that place and talk it up as much as we can. Heroes on the Park, I always enjoy that event. I'm a little disappointed we don't get more people to come. Maybe next year we can, especially if Grady's gonna be there, we can promote it a different way, or somehow to try to get a few more people there, but it's always fun. It's always moving and a good event. And last but not least, congrats, T., on your budget. This was a good, this was a good budget. I think we have a good, solid budget. And I know, like, I was congratulating Betsy on being nervous about Chamber Annual Meeting. You're always Chamber about, you're always nervous about the budget, so it's passed. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Good budget, so that's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dolison.
Good evening. I am certainly been impressed by many things that been shared tonight. Certainly, the budget was a, was a big deal. First opportunity to, to really peer into and see how we actually, you know, formulate the budget, and it's an amazing process, very insightful, and I'm just happy to have the opportunity to be a part of that. The city has done an outstanding job in the preparation, but also explaining it as well. It's not as easy as it looks, to say the least. I do want to also commend Chief Brennan. I've known David a long time as a volunteer, actually starting the chaplaincy program for our police department probably 24 years ago. And I remember David very well, as he was moving up through the ranks, and I've watched a lot of chiefs come through, and he's just been a stellar asset to the city, and he will be sorely missed. He's greatly appreciated by so many throughout our community. His calm demeanor and just his overall attitude has been a blessing to, to all of us, and so I want to thank God for him and for his work here in the city, for his loving family, that they will enjoy just time together. And he is committed to certainly keeping an open eye on, on the city and making sure that we do move forward. Another thing that happened at the swearing-in, we had several. It's one of the largest swearing-ins I've seen in a long time. And I think that it is noted that the, the diversity of the offices was, was amazing to see that our city's changing, as well as our nation as well, but that's America. And that's what makes us unique and special, I think, in many ways, is that there are so many who come from various places, and when we come together, we really make a great, a great community. So again, to David, God bless you, and to the police department, I know that you will move forward on the new leadership of our new chief. I've known him a while as well, and certainly look forward to working with him and being a part of the Winter Haven PD. Also Florence Place dedication was really, I wasn't able to make it to the dedication. I had some work to do right next door, and, but I was happy to, to see that the residents that have moved in there, our church is in close proximity to the, to the project, and so we have had the opportunity to meet several of the residents, and in fact, we have had an outreach to the residents. And just yesterday, I was conversing with several of them who were visiting with us. So it's just great to have new neighbors, and we appreciate that. It's really been a great opportunity for us as, as a church. Been in the community since 1909, so we've been there a while. Also, the Ritz Award Show, tell you, that, that was a blast in itself, so that was one of the highlights that I think I really enjoyed every aspect of that. The Legoland event was, was amazing. The food was just outstanding, and they had probably the biggest hot dog I've ever seen in my life. I think it was made for at least five people. And, and Chief Bird tried it, and he said they couldn't eat it all. They couldn't eat it, they couldn't eat it all. But it was just a wonderful event, be able to, and able to meet with some of the staff and talk with some of them about some of the other things that are happening there. So it's just great to see a wonderful enterprise in our city doing such great work, and also opportunity for us to come in and to view some of the activities, some of the things that are going on. So continue to keep up the good work.
All right. That's it. Mayor Prokam Yates.
Still making notes here. So sorry, bear with me. I've got a, kind of a long list as well. It seems like everything started to happen here these last couple of weeks for events-wise. But first thing I'll say is the Blue Sky ribbon-cutting, I mean, so many people came up to me and just thanked us for our focus on housing and affordable housing, and I hope that we can produce more of that, especially the most impactful individual that walked up to me was a young mother who explained to me prior to them having that place to live, she lived with her children in the woods. And so the fact that we put our heads together with county funds, with state funds, with Blue Sky, and everybody came together to complete this, this project, that's a huge testament and gives these families now an opportunity to succeed, and that, I think, is, is really our, should always be one of our, should be our primary focus up here, is families succeeding in Winter Haven, Florida. In addition to that, I will echo the Heroes on the Park. It was a great event. We beat the weather again. Little nervous with those ladders up in the air and lightning strikes all around, but we've got a bubble over downtown Winter Haven, I think, and that keeps the lightning away. But I will say, I just, I wish there was better attendance on that event as well, you know, and it drummed up some additional conversations that we had been having, you know, a couple of years ago, and that is the communication piece. And, well, I didn't know anything about it, and I didn't, and I like, we cannot go and physically knock on everybody's doors and say, this is what's happening this week in Winter Haven, Florida. But I, I know social media has been a strong mechanism to get the word out on events, but, and I'll skip ahead, I was gonna say thank you to Betsy Cleveland for being here tonight from the chamber. I think for a while there, we missed having somebody from the chamber out in the audience, so thank you for coming tonight. And, you know, maybe there's, again, we can start to look at some correlation between the city's calendar and the chamber's calendar and everybody's calendar, and some way to get the word out on these events, because it just, it's annoying to me when people say, you know, I didn't know anything about it, and it's partially on them and probably partially on us, so I, I don't know, not to babble on about that, but I just wish we could get the word out somehow more clearly to folks to say, hey, come on out, because I think they would come if they knew about it. Toward the American Red Cross facility, great facility there. They're probably gearing up right now, as we speak, for a potential weather impact here later this week. So they really do an awesome job. They got awesome, an awesome crew down there, awesome leaders, and so thankful that they are here in the Winter Haven community. Let's see. Attended the Main Street Winter Haven and Winter Haven EDC Annual Meeting. Just so much positivity from that meeting and so many good things that are happening in downtown and around our community, to focus in on those rather than, you know, hear negative chatter out there and, and unfactual chatter on social media, because it's just really, where we were 25 years ago is downtown Winter Haven, and where we are today, I'll take today over 25 years ago every day of the week, so. Little hiccup right now, but I think things will start getting back on track and, and refocusing, and, and it'll be hopping, mainly because the Ritz. And I attended the Ritz Open House as well, and, oh, standing room only. I can't, I've never been into the Ritz where it was a standing-room-only event, so, yeah, that, Dan's doing an awesome job there. Every person that I've spoke to about the Ritz has said 110%, we did the right decision up here by buying that and moving forward, so no doubts that that's gonna be successful. And thank you to Dan and his team. Attended a community discussion near the Boggy Bottom area, and I know that's county, but they asked that I, I come out and visit and attend, and I attended that event along with some county officials as well. And I think the most impactful thing to me from that event was just, again, educating, educating what city limits are, what county limits are, who responds, who answers the phone, those kind of things, because it's just, it's as, as well as we know it up here, it's just not known out in the community. And I think the more focus and more effort that we can put on that to just giving a strong education to concerns makes for a stronger community. Attended the Winter Haven versus Lakeland game. We won't talk about that. That didn't, wasn't the outcome we were hoping for, but I will say, they started talking about graduation and potentially graduation not being held in Dennison Stadium. And I know that was kind of one of our main focuses, to bring graduation back to Winter Haven by putting in the money for the field, and it's just a beautiful space now. I understand, I don't think we've written that check yet to the, the county. Maybe they forgot about it. We won't have to give them it.
So I'll share with you, the, you know, when we had the discussions with the school board about making a contribution, it was about the primary point that was factored into that MOU in that discussion was public access to that facility and the coordinated shared use of it. That has to be worked into the use agreement with the school board. That has not happened yet. Julie Adams is having conversations with them to try and pull the parties together. I sent communication last week to one of the administrators within the school district and have also spoken, was contacted by a school board member. We are prepared to write that check. We just gotta have what that use agreement is gonna look like.
Well, maybe we can put one more caveat in there to, like, graduation must be held.
Well, that's...
I think the school board has just executed some agreements.
Second that motion. Using the RP Funding Center.
Sorry.
John, you're, you're just always a buzzkill, aren't you?
Sorry.
Anywho, a couple more things, so almost done. Attended the Mission ribbon-cutting. Wow, what a, what a great new facility they've got down there. They, they work so hard, and kudos out to the Mission and everybody associated and their staff and volunteers. They work so hard to do, to fill a need in our community, and just congratulations for the stride that they continue to make in, in filling the gap there. And Commissioner, or Mayor Prokam, if I could just add one thing for the benefit of the, I don't know if everybody got a chance to go by there to their, the Mission's new facilities, but it is certainly aligned with what your priority has been with addressing homelessness and, and support services for families. That, that new facility that they opened up is, is 100% geared towards families and the facilities that they have in there for children to kind of keep them in safe view and, and while parents are doing job interviews or working on, at the, at the computer stations or doing the grocery shopping that they do, it is really intended to accommodate the whole family, not just the adult. So it's a, certainly aligns with what your, your principles and priorities have been expressed to us over the past few years. Attended the RLC Dinner, where I was sworn in as secretary, so now I can get Bobby Green's coffee at all the meetings. That'll be my main job. Secretary, that's secretary joke, but that's all right. I've never had a secretary, but now I am one, so that's good. Main Street Winter Haven Board Retreat, attended that, and again, they just, really just brainstorming on downtown Winter Haven and, and being positive and, and doing positive things down there. Bankers' Cup, congratulations again to, to our very own T. Michael, also to the Woman of the Year, Jane McGinnis. Also wanted to give congratulations to the Large Business of the Year, which was the Agricultural and Labor Program, the Small Business of the Year, which was Next Home, Norris &amp; Company Realty, and then also the Entrepreneur of the Year. Realty, and then also the Entrepreneur of the Year in Steve Calagritas, so all very well deserving winners and just congratulations to all of them. Had a chance to sit down with Six Ten last week. I wanted to reach out and kind of hear from them, what's going on, what are their plans, what, what, you know, what are their next projects that they could be looking at and, and we had some frank conversations, to say the least, about, you know, kind of what my thoughts were and the community's thoughts were and again, I'll take downtown Winter Haven today over where it was 25 years ago, but I just kind of wanted to be better informed about where Six Ten currently stood and where they're going and, and what their vision is and, and so that was a, Amber Alert.
Everybody's got it.
And so that was a good meeting.
That's your time limit.
I know, right? Well, I'm sorry. One, one more and this is the very important one, one last one. So the county is reviewing the comp plan, which may result in the removal of the adjacent concurrency calculation with the school board's inter-local agreement for concurrency. I've been harping on that since I've set up here, it, it's just a, a calculation that's unfair, it doesn't make sense and the fact that we are very close now to the county doing away with adjacent concurrency calculations and that goes into, you know, do you approve this project because there's a school available a district away or do you approve this proj, not approve it because there's not a, a school area right next door? So I think that's a positive thing for Polk County going forward and I hope that comes to fruition. I'm done.
Now, you know, I was just joking.
Well, I was almost done anyway.
Oh, all right. And the reason I was joking because I have a long list here, so I'm gonna be here for at least another 35, 40 minutes. Am I gonna be by myself?
Nope, I think so.
Oh, all right, so I'll be brief. Well, I'll start with the, the, one of the joys that I had the last two weeks is to present a proclamation to a lady that turned 104. And she was alert, she ate, and she thanked you, she thanked me for the proclamation and I said, oh my goodness, at 104, I was really, really impressed with this lady and so that was my real, my, my, my biggest highlight. I also attended the Honoring Our Heroes, I attended our Lakes Committee Meeting of which I'm the liaison, Chief Brennan, retirement celebration, you know, I've been here a long time, part of his career and so he has just been, just an outstanding police chief and we're gonna miss him. I tried to get him to delay it, but his wife said, no, that's my, that's my take on it now, chief, you did not tell me that. So, but we're gonna miss you and we wish you the absolute best. Attended the Legoland event, the Public Safety Swearing In of the Officers event, the EDC slash Main Street annual meetings and they both are doing a fine job and we appreciate you all. And the Bankers' Cup, Betsy, I have to say, I've attended a lot of Bankers' Cups over the last 20 years and the Chamber event and I think you did an outstanding job and welcome officially to the city of Winter Haven. I hadn't officially done that from up here and so I want to welcome you to our great city, I mean, wish you well. And to our, our own city manager, well deserved and just congratulations, man. And you know, I learned something and, you know, they say you can't teach an old dog new tricks, an old person, new information, but T, the one thing that I learned from the Bankers' Cup was that whole story about you playing and raising the money for the transportation. I, I had never heard that before, so I was very impressed with that. So you don't keep all your money that they donate to you, so I'm, you know, I'm really impressed with that, T, so I want to publicly say that to you because I had never, ever heard that story before. So it was a great event, thoroughly enjoyed it. chaired one of the PRWC meetings and Gary and I and the rest of us, we are, you know, water is really a major issue, alternative water for Polk County and not just Polk County, but for basically the state of Florida, so, and it's gonna cost us and we're moving forward, so I'm just grateful that we have a Gary Hubbard that's a, a part of our leadership team that is helping charter the path forward, so more to come on that. Attended the health awareness at the Neighborhood Service Center, ate some very, 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 very good food, as they always have, hats off to the cooks, thoroughly enjoyed it. Got to the Florence Place ribbon cutting late, but I did make it and actually viewed one of the units and had some of their food as well. The one thing that I, I want to say tonight is that, you know, with the avalon rate and the budget that we passed, you know, we did it without a lot of fanfare, but at the end of the day, it has such an impact on our city and our residents and it's a testament to the commission and to the management of our city that we can do it and improve and make things better and do it in such a way that we all work together. There's not a lot of drama, for lack of a better term, and so my hats are off to the staff of the city and to our commissioners as well, because we play a major role, especially in the avalon tax and even in the budget, so I'm just overjoyed tonight and happy and pleased and I'm a little tired, I just didn't make it from my trip, my Cowboys lost the game, but I made my commission meeting on time, right straight from the airport, all right. So with that being said, we are moving right along. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commission. I share your sentiments about feeling grateful and blessed and feeling joy being able to have the privilege of serving and sitting here tonight. I look out and I see our friends, Kim and David, and I certainly wish them well. We won't say goodbye, we'll just say, see you later. And it's well deserved and certainly well thought of and the new police chief, Vance Monroe, we look forward to many years of good leadership. The chamber function par excellence, it was, it was well done and, you know, I, I get, I had no idea who the Bankers' Cup man was. I walked across the street from T's office with him to the function and, you know, it's, it's, as I said, a privilege, it's my privilege to get, to sit next to a leader servant such as T. Michael, who I consider both professionally and personally a friend. And so when good things happen to good people, that's a great thing and, and we have a lot of good things happening to a lot of very good people in our community and around and so I think this is a, this is a testament to a lot of hard work. No one rests on their laurels, we shouldn't, we should always strive to, to, to move forward, continue to do better and, and I think that's just the message that you, that you hear and I think this meeting tonight is reflective of that and I'll say no more.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager.
Yeah, these comments, I feel like I should be retiring tonight.
Oh.
I do just want to take just a minute to say thank you for your support, you know, those things that I get to do in the community probably take a lot of grief at times, people think that that's foolishness, cause they don't understand the greater good that comes from it, but it is all about paying it forward and helping so many of these agencies that I see doing great things to help others. So I appreciate the commission's support over the past 20 years that has allowed me to do that and give back in that way and intend to do a whole lot more of it in the minutes that I have between meetings and weekend events with the city to try and make Winter Haven the best place it can be. Couple of things, much like you, Mayor, we just flew in today, this afternoon, from Pittsburgh, MJ and I, it was a long commute, we've spent the past 72 hours thereabout in classes with the International City County Management Association and I'll tell you, it is, it is always great to go to those because you learn so much about what's going on in the world and how you can apply that in your neck of the woods. This year was particularly special because I heard people talk about all the things that they should be doing and needed to be doing. We were proud to say that Winter Haven, Florida has done those things and is doing those things and stand out amongst a crowd of thousands of managers from around the world and be able to tout the successes that this commission has accomplished and that is so enjoyable to do. You mentioned the budget, I've gotta give a special thank you to CJ and Alan and Katrina and all the team that worked on this budget, all of our department directors, you know, CJ and Alan are the kind of the brains behind how do you make all this stuff work, once you get all the requests and all the needs from the departments, the department directors are very fiscally conservative and very mindful of the dollars that they're asking for. Katrina helps us put all that into a document that is easy to read. I will tell you that on the communication front, they are working now on what we call a budget and brief document that will synthesize this 500-page budget down to just a few pages that is easily disseminated out to the general public, either in hard copy or through our website and becomes a very strong communication tool. The budget is a numeric reflection of what the city commission's priorities are and so this will help further educate and communicate to the public those items. I also want to give a great word of appreciation and thanks to our Finance Department and to the City Commission. Finance Department over the past few years has brought you a number of different policies to consider, you have graciously listened and adopted those where you felt appropriate and as I shared with you, I believe on Thursday of last week, your most recent credit rating improved again. So this is two years in a row and this is with your Fitch credit worthiness of your non-advalorm revenues, went from a double A minus to a double A with a positive outlook. It was a double A minus with a stable outlook, I believe, going into that. Some of that is tied to some of the rating adjustments, the, the criteria they use, but it also, that doesn't happen by accident without you being intentional about decisions you're making and I want to thank CJ and her team for, for helping us find ways to improve and for our department directors embracing that to put those practices into place and congratulations, City Commission, that is a, again, a tremendous step, again, forward that shows the responsibility that you take so seriously and how you carry out your work. Last thing I'll mention is we are monitoring what is happening in the tropics right now. We will continue to do that over the next 24 hours before we start making any type of decisions in our neck of the woods. I've asked Assistant City Manager for Public Safety Charlie Byrd to begin communicating with our department directors as we look to what could be deteriorating conditions Wednesday evening through the better part of the day on Thursday of this week. A lot of, we, my intent is that we will continue carrying out our mission critical work through those days, but putting absolute priority on employee safety and citizen safety in the process of doing so and also being mindful of what the county is doing as well as what the school district is doing in the event that they have to do any sheltering and I think that that is yet to be fully determined, but we are watching that closely and we will communicate to all of you via email collectively, no need to respond to those unless you have direct questions you need from me, but expect some communication over the next 48 hours. That's all.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. So as you may know, the county's Chamber of Commerce has come together every year to recognize young professionals in the area. I believe Commissioner Yates was a recipient of that award not too many years ago.
I believe MJ Carnavale was as well at one point.
It's true, but they revamped those awards a little bit this year and so they switched into, they used to recognize multiple people, they switched it into three categories this year, so there was an emerging leader, a legacy builder, and one nonprofit leader. And Savannah Winston Lee from our city staff, who has led a lot of our urban forestry efforts, was recognized as the emerging leader for Polk County this year, so that's pretty exciting. If you see her, just, you know, give her, for a kudos on that and a lot of it was specifically related to the work she's done, leading the urban forestry efforts for the city, so just wanted to point that out and then also congratulate City Manager on the Bankers' Cup. I probably have a better feel for than almost anybody of just how busy he is and the fact that he spends time, endless time outside of his official duties to give back to the community in so many ways is inspirational to all of us to get to work with him and it's cool to see that be recognized.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Deputy City Clerk.
Just want to extend a happy retirement to Chief Brennan, just want to let you know that it's well deserved, hopefully you get some rests, some much deserved rest and that you enjoy, it was a pleasure working with you and we're gonna miss you very greatly and a lot and I want to congratulate our Bankers' Cup Man of the Year, City Manager Stavers, very well deserved and it's a pleasure to work for you and with you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Emergency matters not received for the agenda. Motion to adjourn. We stand adjourned.